Okay, well, welcome everybody to the May tenth Fleetwood Borough Council meeting. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll, that would be great.
Okay. Suzanne, Touch?
Here.
Will you be recording?
I will not.
Okay, Pete Merkel? Did we lose Pete? Pete Merkel?
Chris told me to mute myself, sorry.
Will you be recording the meeting at all, Pete?
No.
Jim Meals?
They're not recording.
Okay, thank you. Mark Watkins?
Present and not recording.
Okay, Ralph Touch?
Present and not recording.
Okay, Colin Boyer?
I'm here.
Will you be recording the meeting?
Haven't decided yet.
John Rothenberger?
Present, not recording.
Thank you. Chief Stensky?
Present, not recording.
Okay. Andy George?
I'm here and I'm not recording.
Chris Young?
Here and will start recording now for Borough purposes only.
Okay, and Craig Conrad?
Here and not recording.
Okay, and Ryan Kern?
Here and not recording.
Okay, Mayor Gore, did she join us yet?
I don't think so.
She's here, okay. And then as far as the attendees and guests, Brayden, will you be recording this meeting at all?
He is on mute.
Brayden, will you be recording this Borough meeting at all tonight? Okay, we'll move on. James Duka, did he join us yet?
No.
Tammy is online.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Tammy, will you be recording the meeting at all?
Absolutely not.
Okay, and Denton Shucker? Will you be recording?
Not recording. Going back to mute.
Okay, all right, thank you. I see Jeremy B. listed in the guests. I don't-
Jeremy, can you, Jeremy, if you can hear us, can you let us know where-
Yeah, I am, I am Brayden Vice's father.
Oh.
And we both will not be recording.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we have one more coming in, Doreen. Welcome, the person who just joined us with the phone number ending in nine one eight eight, can you let us know who you are, please?
Hello, this is James Duka.
Perfect, welcome aboard.
All right.
Excuse me, Jim, will you be recording the meeting tonight?
Jim, can you still hear us?
Who, me?
Yes, sir.
No, I will not be recording it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Brayden, is he still on? I'm just checking to see if he is recording the meeting at all.
That's what his dad said, that they're both on and not recording.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, then that should be everybody accounted for.
Thank you, Doreen. If anybody does determine that they're going to be recording the meeting, please give everyone the courtesy to advise that that's happening, okay? All right, moving on, we've got, Chief, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Why don't you give us your report first, please?
Okay, the report was mailed out in the wee hours this morning to all the councils. A couple of points, I can tell you that I'm very happy to say that our part-time criminal investigator hasn't quit yet because he started working and two days later he was picked up in the maelstrom. We had investigating an aggravated assault at East Penn where a jilted lover looks like she rammed on purpose her ex's car as they were leaving work. So she, that investigation resulted in charges of aggravated assault. Also had a report of child abuse investigation we conducted in the borough. That seems to be basically a child custody type thing and thankfully doesn't appear to be any serious physical abuse, we can tell as of yet. This past month, Sergeant and I did participate in a Coffee with the Cop event in Fleetwood. It was fairly well attended. A big note, I think it was Corey's second day at work. The, there was a home invasion kind of robbery just outside the borough. One of the, in one of the rental properties where a couple of people forced their way into the house to steal money and prescription drugs from the occupants. So, one of the, yes.
Can you hold on a second? The person who just joined with a phone number nine one four two, can you hear us? The person who just joined the Fleetwood meeting at nine one four two, can you? I think he just left. Okay, sorry Steve, they were, they were unmuted and they were causing a distraction, so go ahead.
Yep, yeah, no problem. So like I said, right outside the Borough line in Ruska Manor, there was a home invasion kind of robbery that happened. I think four individuals forced their way into one of the rental properties there and manhandled the occupants a bit and left with money and prescription medications. We did recover some of the, some of the meds. One of the people was arrested and of course he had drugs on him when he was arrested. The investigation is continuing to try to track down the identities of the other three. We did have a vehicle that was taken from the borough. It was taken and brought back. Few hours later dumped a few doors down, so that investigation is still ongoing, pending some lab work and receipt of some video we're looking for. And we're also in the middle of a very sizable theft of money from an elderly Borough resident that is being investigated by us right now as well. As you know, let's see, I'm back from military duty. All, all of our personnel are either, well, everybody's vaccinated. Corey's on the schedule to get his, so the department's in good shape there. Right before I left, I got a couple of different vehicle proposals in for the new vehicle, so I'll be reviewing those this week and making, making some progress on there. I also reached out to update the door locks on the interview room and the other admin office so we could use the same fob that we use on the doors down in the main police office. And I'm also going to be putting a quote in to get another computer for a criminal investigator. I did, I did, we were, we, right before I left last month, we were approached by Maxitani Township about possibly providing them some part-time service. Thursday, I think it was, I actually got the list of incidents from Maxitani from Berks County Radio for 2019 and 2020. So I'll be taking a look at those things in depth over the next week or so here and then I'll begin with Chris to discuss any concerns or issues or a way forward. Aside from that, we have the, I know the large vehicle ordinance is a, is a point of concern for some folks. I did speak with Tom very briefly about that and I think maybe we had a workshop or something, we could get together with some of the council members and find out exactly, determine what exactly your goals are so we can craft this thing to make sure it's hitting all, it's going through all the wickets you want. This, you guys approved this thing right as I was coming in the door. So we didn't really have a lot of input into it and I think I gave you guys kind of a recap of what it said and didn't say. But we'll look at that and like I said, once we get better to find exactly what your goals are as council, we could work on giving you some suggestions to tailor, tailor when you do the codification and you renew all the ordinances, so we hit that just right for you.
Steve, Steve, on that, I haven't been able to, I haven't had the time, but I think what we're going to do is get public safety together. So that would be John Rothenberger and Ralph and myself and ask Mark Watkins on codes to join that meeting and, and really discuss this and find out really what, what the goals are and what we want for the borough. And so perhaps you could be part of that conversation. So I'm going to try to get a date and a time together, okay? So thank you.
Yep. Yep. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for the Chief before he leaves?
No, but I'd again like to say, congratulations on the Red Cross honor. Did that breakfast happen or is that happening next week?
Well, it's actually Thursday and it's a virtual breakfast, so at least I won't be gaining any weight because of it.
Okay, okay, well, congratulations again, well deserved.
Thank, thank you.
Did I hear that someone had a question in the background? I thought someone did.
Yeah, it's Mark. Just wanted to, if there's any update on, on those kids with the motorized bicycles. I still see them racing about town, didn't know if you've got any update on that, I knew we talked about it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I did, I did direct the officers to make that. If they were, you can see we had some pretty heavy criminal things the past month. I did tell them to concentrate on this and that during their free time, so to speak. We had, we only gotten two calls last month concerning those types of things. One of them, the officer got to the area and searched the area high and low and couldn't find the culprits. The other one, I think it was Officer Arnt found somebody who was on like a little mini, mini motorcycle kind of thing and shank-hired him and spoke with the parents. Apparently the kid had, apparently the kid had it out without his parents' knowledge or permission. So we, we basically gave, since it was initial contact, we gave him a stern warning that they know that they're facing further action if, if the kid's seen out again. So that, so I, I, I'm, so it seems like based upon the calls and, and things we've seen on community social media pages that it may have dipped down a little bit, I don't know if that's because it's cold, but I expect if it's a big thing, it'll probably blossom as the weather gets warmer and kids start getting out of school. But it's, it remains on our radar and we're going to do the best we can to cut it off as early as we can.
Yeah, it's usually three kids. It's normally right around five, six o'clock, right around that dinnertime. They, I mean, they're loud and, and okay, so what, you know? But the thing is, they have no helmets, they're, they don't pay attention to any of the traffic signs. The concern is, is that they get hurt or they're going to hurt somebody else and so, anyway, yeah. I see them every day, I don't know where they go, they come by here, go down past Willow Creek Elementary and then I hear them coming back, I, strange.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll get somebody to focus in that area around that time then.
Okay, sounds good.
Anybody else have anything else for Chief?
Yes, Steve, it's Pete.
Yes, sir.
I know you're tired of me bringing this up, but Bobby says there's been more vandalism in the new restroom at the park. It just, that, that irritates me so bad. Apparently we have some video or something.
Yeah, there, I, I know right before I left, we were looking at an upgrade to the video system there. So I have, I have to get, I just got back into town yesterday and then I worked last night, so I didn't, I didn't get to delve too deep into the cases that happened while I was away. But I know, I think Maria was looking at some of the video and I know that she did talk to a couple of the kids and a couple of the parents. So, and she actually sent me an email, because we talked in the past about if we have repeat offenders, you know, banning them from the park for the rest of the year and stuff like that. So let me look, look over those cases and I'll get with Tammy and you guys and see where we are. But obviously, if we identify anybody who's responsible for any damage we'll definitely be looking for restitution at a minimum if nothing else.
Well, whatever, throw the book at them, that's my opinion. I did have another thought. Why don't we put cameras inside the restrooms? And John and I can monitor the ladies' room and Tammy and Suzanne can monitor the men's room.
Yeah, I, I could think there may be a person or two that have a problem with that, Pete, but yeah, I had a, I can tell you, through my vast experience, we had issues with people starting fires in restrooms at one point at a school, not, not around here, and there was some concern, so yeah, that was my idea too, to put a, put a camera in the restroom and try to keep it like away from the stalls and stuff. But there were some civil liberties concerns and surprise issues in case somebody didn't properly adjust themselves stepping out of a stall or away from a urinal, so we had to show stuff down the hallway.
Like I say, Tammy and Suzanne can monitor the men's room.
I, I don't want to see that.
I don't think that's appropriate, but okay, moving along. Anybody else have anything for Pete?
No.
Okay. I mean, not Pete, I'm sorry, Chief. Okay, Chief, looks like you can go on, don't you have your other meeting tonight as well?
I do. So, as always, if you need something, just shoot me a text and I'll jump back on.
Sure, and Steve, I've seen like, I think like Mark, I've seen those kids go through our neighborhood as well, so I don't have it as quite on a timed event like Tammy did, but I've seen them a few times coming through our neighborhood, so.
Okay.
And they really just seem to be, you know, they're just very young and very exuberant, but I worry that they're going to either hurt someone or they're going to drive into traffic.
Okay.
Hey, then we're going to move on to Ryan Kern, please, with the engineering report.
Hey, good evening all. First item on our engineers report is our standard item, it's the MS4 inclusion reduction plan. The narrative for the Willow Creek Restoration Project and the plans have been completed. We are in the process of contacting DEP to close out the items on the grant. The issues with the Berks County MS4 Steering Committee, we were notified by the Planning Commission, by the County Planning Commission, that they're going to be creating new websites and new links for the MS4 Steering Committee along with additional educational information and such. So keep an eye out for that. Christine Meldner from my office will, will give Chris Young a heads up if, if she gets notified first. And then sponsoring students. The approval to sponsor two SRI students this year in the lower grades of high school. The program will explore research projects focused on improving water quality of streams. So that was another announcement from the MS4 Steering Committee. And then lastly, they're doing a countywide survey for all the members of the committee to see if, if who, if and who will be willing to share all their GIS data for their, basically for their MS4 maps and MS4 program, including any BMPs and PRP solutions and such. So Chris, I don't know if you received that survey?
I don't recall, actually.
Okay.
Actually, I did and I could send it back.
Okay, Craig, you got it, good.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on our engineers report is the West Arch Street feasibility study. We have completed a draft of that study. I'm in the, I'm in the process of reviewing it before, before I approve it to go over to the borough. We'll coordinate with Chris and Craig, our findings and the report and anything else like that with the cost estimate and plans and such here in the coming week or so. But basically the gist is, we're looking to replace all of the storm sewer on the south curb line of Arch Street between Chestnut and Maple and put in as large of a pipe as we possibly can and then infiltrate as much of that water into the ground as possible. We did infiltration tests, we got good soil, we have good soil in that area. We just need to make sure, you know, in the future, with all utilities that are there and service lines to the house, houses to the south of, of Arch Street, that we can fit in some maximized pipe. We're thinking a maximum of forty-eight inches, but it's probably likely to be smaller than that. So that's what we'll be doing, we're going to coordinate that with Chris and Craig in the near future. And then lastly, the Willow Creek Pedestrian Bridge. We did have some issues with the first day of drilling. Some teeth on the augers broke on two separate auger heads. So they scheduled it for a separate day to come back out with a different system and different head. And we did receive the Geotech report and then we did provide that to the Borough and the architect. So that's the last official item on my engineers report. Open to questions now or any comments anybody may have.
Anybody have anything for Ryan?
Ryan, could you tell me again on Arch Street, what, between what street and what street, please?
Chestnut and Maple, I believe those are the two. Right by the elbow, by the park, by the pedestrian bridge that got knocked over.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, if that's all the questions for Ryan, then Ryan, you are excused then. And if we have anything further for you, we'll get in touch if you have any questions that come up during the meeting, okay?
Sounds good. All right, thanks Suzanne, everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Ryan.
Night.
Moving now to the guests, our open phone lines. Chris, can we go through those, please?
There's, there's two Eagle Scouts projects on. One is Mr. Vice, I believe, and the other one is Mr. Duka. I believe Mr. Vice was on first, so if you want to go that way.
Why don't we do that? The first one, Mr. Vice, did you say, if he could report, he could introduce himself and tell us what he'd like to talk about, that would be great.
Alrighty, so my name is Brayden Vice, I'm a Life Scout with a two point eight three out of one EPA. I'm currently working on a June my goal Camillo Scout. With this rank, I have certain requirements you've got to complete, but the main part that I'd like to improve for is my project. See, the project that I picked out and selected to do is to build a shelving system made out of and sheets of bigger inch plywood would be for the food pantry in the dry storage area. It'd be three different sections of shelving that would be assembled and put together once they're in their place in the area or in the dry storage room. That way they can stately and safely store their food and maximize their efficiency and also have all the, all the food readily available. I am asking that I, I be able to have two to three parking spaces along the exterior of the door, exterior of the building towards the roll-up door or the sliding door, that I have these three parking spots reserved for a building area and for building cutting and holding lumber there. I'm also asking that I can do this project on June the fifth and the sixth. Do you have any questions for me?
So when you're talking about the shelving system for the food pantry, where exactly are we talking? Is that in the kitchen?
So it'd be if you enter the cafeteria and go into the main cooking area, once you go through there past the sinks, you go through a, a room which keeps all the food that the food pantry houses at this current moment, so it's just stacked up. So I did talk to Mr. Wright, who operates the food pantry, and he has liked my ideas for this. And it would just be to build some wooden shelving that would be able to hold the food and just anything they need to hold.
Okay. Chris, do you know if they, do they use that room at all for Breakfast Brothers as well? Or any other senior citizens or any other groups, or is it strictly food pantry?
That's strictly food pantry.
Okay.
And Brayden, what about financing of the project?
The project itself, we finance, we finance by myself and my troop. I am working, I have a half, or actually three quarters of the cost covered by myself from some proceeds that I have raised and the rest of them will be covered by a, a sale I'm doing, a food turkey sale.
Excellent.
Chris, that isn't, that's not the room that has the little sink and toilet in there, that's, that's, I'm trying to picture this room.
It's behind it.
It's right behind it, okay, thank you. Okay, I got it.
This is Craig, I've been talking to Brayden via email back and forth about his project and the dates that he selected and, you know, if council approves the project, we are fine with the dates and also giving him those parking spaces that he asked for, you know, to set up his work area outside the door. So whatever council decides to do here, we're ready to go. And he has all his approvals from the food branch, so I think he's, I think he's pretty much ready to go forward.
And Craig, you don't see any conflicts with other groups in that area whatsoever?
No, I don't, I mean, that, that space is fully used by Food Bank and like Brayden said, the stuff is just stacked in there, I think the shelving will make it more organized and a lot easier for them to see what they have and go through things.
Great.
Craig, will you be able to cordon off an area for Brayden to work safely in that parking area?
Yes, yes, we can tone that off and barricade that off and give him the space that he needs.
Okay. Well, at this time, Brayden, it sounds like a great, a great idea and thank you so much for your interest in doing something great for the borough and the food pantry. I think we need to have a motion just to confirm this on the record, yes? And once we do, then you can get started.
This is John, I'll make that motion.
I have, I've got a motion on the floor, do I have a second, please?
This is Mark, I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion at this time? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll? Okay, Suzanne Touch? Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
That's perfect, thank you very much, that motion carries. So Brayden, again, congratulations and thank you so much for your interest. Please work with Craig to get, so make sure that he's got your area all cordoned off and we wish you the best of luck with your project.
Yes, ma'am, will do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brayden.
Chris, you have a second, Eagle Scout?
Mr. Duka?
Hello, okay.
Jim, Jim, before you, before you start, council, everybody was sent very late this afternoon his proposal in email, so if you have an opportunity to see that, that might help because this is a little bit more involved in a visual. Okay.
Yeah, me and my father have a whole packet set up that we should have had sent out to everyone. So if you all would check real quick and then I could get going and started. Just please let me know if that is sent out or if anyone has it open.
Chris, is that a separate email?
Yeah, it was sent out at four o'clock this afternoon.
Four oh three, it says Fleetwood Berks UCC?
Yes, that would have been one of them. There was Andy's, it was five different documents in it.
Pete, it's attached to that, it's Duka Eagle document.
Got it.
All right, so does everybody have that open?
I'm curious about this, James, a Gaga pit.
Yeah. So my name is James Duka, I'm working towards my Eagle Scout and I'm here tonight to propose building a Gaga ball pit in either the Fleetwood Park on Main Street, which is the one I would prefer to build it in, but also I am considering building in Locust Street or the Locust Street Park, if that is also a consideration and it might be better there in your guys' eyes, well, guys and girls' eyes. But if you're unfamiliar with Gaga ball, it's kind of like a form of dodgeball that takes place in an octagon with three foot high sides. It's a game I play with friends a lot through scouts, church and youth groups. Gameplay consists of hitting a ball, punching it, slapping it, or any form of touching it without kicking it or hitting with any body part below your knee. And if you get hit below your waist or below your knee, depending on which way you're playing, you're out. You step out of the ring and the play continues with whoever's left. And alternatively, if a player who catches the ball, who is out, they could go in. There's a bunch of different rule sets and, you know, play continues until there is one person left and they are declared the winner. On page four, there is the wooden Gaga ball pit, which is kind of what I would like to be building here. And instead of that style, you can see it has a inner brace on the inside. If you look on one of the next few pages, I believe it is page five, maybe, five or six. five, maybe, five or six, you'll see my model that we have built out of a four by four and, I believe it's four by eight, but instead of the four by eights, we're going to be using four by ten. Now, you can see there, it is a outer brace, so no one will get hurt on hitting themselves on the inside of the ring. And you can jump around the walls and it'll be very sturdy and put in place. But I proposed building this with four by four external bracing and two by ten treated lumber for the sides. Each of the corners will be buried thirty inches deep with sixty pounds of concrete in the hole. Most Gaga ball pits are twelve to fifteen feet across. To save money on lumber, I would like to have my Gaga ball pit about fourteen feet, six inches in diameter, and it would be about six foot long size. Now, as you can see on the cutout of page four, we can replace it with different cutouts and different styles. That's the style I preferred because it's a style I believe is seen, but I know with ADA, Americans With Disabilities Act, we need to accommodate the people who necessarily can't get over a small ledge like that or even a higher one, so I could make it gated or whatever we need. The estimated cost of this project with lumber, hardware, concrete, weed barrier, and mulch is about $637.16. Construction labor will be provided by myself, my friends, and the scouts of troop 103. I will be asking for Lowe's and Home Depot and Weaver's Hardware and other local hardware stores for donations. Any contribution from the borough would be greatly appreciated, and whatever I cannot do, I will be fundraising or using my scout account to pay for. Would anybody have any questions for me?
What is the material on the inside of this? Is that just a mulch?
Um, in the example provided, that is a wood fit mulch, which is what was provided at that park. Now, if you guys would prefer me to try and make it like what our park has, I can try to get the rubber bits that are at the Fleetwood Park, or I could do the same style of mulch that the Locust Street Park has, if you want me to do it there. But it might be a bit more expensive to do the rubber bits instead of the mulch that I was planning on doing.
And it's weather-treated wood?
Yes. This wood is treated and will be able to withstand the weather, and it is being put in the ground with concrete, so any storm like what we had this year should have no effect on it.
And what park is that? Did you take this picture? Where is this?
Um, this is a picture I found on Lonon.
Okay.
I know nearby, there is one Gaga ball pit in Blandon, but it is out of the way, and it is in fact so out of the way, I drove all throughout Blandon trying to find it, and I just couldn't. Because I wanted to get pictures of that one because it's close and nearby, but I couldn't find it. That's kind of why I want to build it in one of our parks, because there's nothing in the area like this, and it would be a good thing for people all around the community to get together in. Because I know personally, if I saw people playing and they were okay with me joining in, once I recovered from my injury from this track season, I would be so down to just join in and have fun.
Chris, where, where are they thinking that this would, would, would fit into the park?
Well, that, that's a conversation I had earlier with him, and that's why Locust Street came up, because something this large in the main park may, may not go well with what's down there unless we would put it all the way in the back, past Pavilion Three. Locust Street, though, since it has a bigger concentration of youth and not uses extensively, might be a way to encourage that park use and keep this facility from interfering with volleyball and basketball and everything else that's down at the main park at this point.
So I guess my concern would be down on the, beyond Pavilion Three would be flooding issues. Locust Street does not sound like a bad idea to me.
It would take a substantial amount of real estate in the park, and I think that front area at Locust Street might go very well with this type of, of project.
No, yeah, that was my thought process. And maybe the, we can take it to the Parks Committee for a final evaluation.
And this is Craig. I just want to add real quick that I have played Gaga ball, and it's actually a lot of fun. We had a youth group territory treat that I was, was a chaperone a few years ago up in Pine Grove, and they had a Gaga ball court there, and we had a lot of fun on that with the kids. It's a really, a fun game that anyone of any age, any size can play. It's, it's, it is actually very fun.
How many people play at a time? I mean, how many do you start with?
So that can be determined by place to place. I know my youth group, we had a huge pit, so we jumped everyone that we could in there. But when I went to Reska Falls Campground one, my first year Boy Scout camp, they said you're only allowed fifteen people in at a time. So it genuinely, or generally will be, depending on the group of people that's playing inside, and it just doesn't really have a limit, except for the size of the pit, what it can handle. We can have a suggested about, or suggested limit, but I don't think there's any real way to enforce it, so.
And what, what type of ball is used?
Any form of playground ball can be used. I've played with the rainbow type ball, I've played with bigger, thicker kickball styles. I've also played with volleyballs before. All have worked astronomically well. The only concern I have is if kids play with like something like a soccer ball, then it gets a little too rough, but it still works, just not as well.
Well, I would assume that this is a bring your own ball type thing, that there wouldn't be a ball there, because that would disappear after thirty-seven seconds.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, I think it sounds like a really fun project, and I, I agree that my thoughts are that it should go to the Parks Committee to find the best location. The only place in the, the Main Street Park I could think of is in that grassy area to the left of the playgrounds, right there, you know, adjacent to Pavilion Three. I won't put it behind because of flooding, like, like, like John said. But I, I could see it down in the, in the main park adjacent to the playground, and I could really see it up at Locust Street. So perhaps the play, the park committee could, could, could do a little research there. But I think it sounds like a really fun game for everybody.
But to maybe have a sign with the rules and stuff so that people, because it's relative.
Yeah. On one of the pages in the packet, it should have the official Gaga ball rule set that I have found online. I was planning on either revising it to make my own version that I feel would fit the size better, or just taking this one and rewriting it a little and just printing it out and keeping it there in laminated foil so it will last through weather.
Right, that's a good idea.
Or a metal sign. I don't know how much a metal sign would be, but.
That is a possibility. I could do a metal sign. It is something that I'd have to look into. Again, that would probably cost a little bit more, but if I can figure out the pricing, I would gladly do it if I had to.
Well, why don't we let the, the Parks Committee make that determination as, as well and work with you, James?
Locust Street, do they still have that association there, just to maybe reach out to somebody from up there, if it's still going? When we did the playground, they had a group of people. I don't know if that's still going on up there.
I don't think it is. I think, you know, that those kids have now grown up, and the parents of those kids sort of passed the baton, so I, I don't know of them still existing.
The idea sounds like a great one. And if it becomes, let's just say the Parks Committee agrees that it should go into Locust Street Park at this point. If it becomes very, if it's very popular, which I've never heard of Gaga ball before tonight, but now that I'm looking on the internet, it is apparently very popular. Maybe it's something we can consider for the other park, and, or maybe we could get one of the community groups interested in providing the signage, so we wouldn't have to, the Eagle Scouts would not have to fund that bill. So maybe there's some opportunity for some collaboration within the community. But it's, it looks like fun. Yeah, I'd play it.
Yeah, Suzie, if I can jump in?
Sure.
Remember, this is the game, Suzie, this is the game that the fourth grade teachers used to talk about.
I remember that, but I don't, so there you have it.
That's okay. So one question, though. I, I think that the rubber mulch would probably be a little safer and less likely to get replaced every year than the other mulch. And I appreciate it costs more. Is that a potential that we can contribute something to that, to upgrade it to the rubber mulch, so we'd have less turnover? Because that would be less maintenance for us and for Craig.
Yeah, that is very well a possibility. Again, it's just the fact that when I made this model and I made the original cost that I estimate, that was with the cheapest material, or the cheapest possible thing that would last as long as possible. But if you guys are willing to help me fund more or willing to help me find the funds for more, I would gladly upgrade it and try and make it as best as possible. So it would last as long as possible.
I don't know what the difference between wood chips and rubber chips are now. It's so hard to get wood. Perhaps, when, when, when did you figure out this pricing? Was it recent?
Um, fairly recently. I, we figured it out about a month ago.
Okay, because.
Yeah.
So.
So Suzie, I'll make the motion. I, I can make the motion to go forward, to give it to the Parks Committee to work out the detail with the recommendation that we contribute $500 toward it to get the upgraded mulch.
So I've got a motion on the table to accept the project and endorse the up to $500 contribution for the mulch. Do I have a second?
This is, I'll second it.
Terrific. So I've got a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion at this time?
Uh, yeah, one question, and I might have missed it. What is the timing for this?
Um, there is no set time as of now. Unfortunately, with graduation coming up and I'm having surgery on the fourteenth, I tore my ACL and meniscus. I am hoping to do it over this summer and get it done early summer. That is my hope.
Okay, that's, that's good for me.
I have all the manpower I could need, though. No one would, I would not need any extra help. I have an entire group of friends who is very willing to help, and what little is my scout troop is, we're very strong and all of them are willing to help me get this done and ready.
Hey, James?
So the second I can get you a date, I will let you know.
James, this is Chris. I think today when we, when I talked to your father, he mentioned that there's a drop dead date of August seventeenth or something like that?
Yes, that is my birthday when I turned eighteen. That is the last possible day I could get this stuff finished for my Eagle. So I am really hoping to get it done way before then, hopefully beginning of the summer.
Yep, okay.
I need to discuss it further with him and further with the troop before I can give you guys a definite date, but I'm projecting mid-June, early July if I can.
So John, the idea would be that he would work that out with the, the actual details at the end of the day with the Parks Committee, just so we all know what's going on and so it doesn't conflict with other things in the park?
Yeah, that's, that was what I was looking for.
Right? So if we, I was just thinking, if we start with the authority to do that, then he can work it out with the Parks Committee day by day, depending on his schedule and if you have less people together.
All right.
Okay.
How would I come in contact with the Park Committee then?
In just a second, let me just finish the vote and then we'll get you the details, okay? So we've got a motion and a second then. Dorian, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll then?
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Agreed.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion is successful then. Mr. Duca, it looks like your project's going to be a go. You're going to be in touch with Chris Young, and he will get you in touch with the Park Committee, and together we'll figure out all the details and make your project a reality.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you so much. All right, I'll be heading out then. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much for your interest in Fleetwood. We really appreciate it and all of your friends, your troops. So that's going to be really terrific. I'm looking forward to it.
Yep. Nice.
All right.
Thank you guys so much.
Bye.
Good night.
Will you have anybody else on lines besides Denton?
I just wanted to let you all know that there's going to be one more Eagle Scout presenting. He will probably present next month. It's Jaded Clemmer, and he wants to do something down at the Triangle Park on the way out of town on, on Main Street there for first responders to go along with the, the military theme down there. He'd like to recognize the first responder. So I'll just give you a heads up that that's, that will be coming.
Excellent. All right, Chris, do we have anybody else in the, on the open phone lines that we need to speak with right now?
I don't.
This is Denton.
Hi Denton.
If you're taking guests, I was going to, when, when Craig got to his part, ask about the Richmond Street pump station. We have an authority meeting coming up Tuesday of next week, and one of the items on our agenda is the pump station at Richmond Street. What I'd like if Craig could do is get the information on that generator that's in there, the kilowatts, the average it can put out. We're going to have to replace some pumps, and not knowing what's going to come with this sun suite program, I don't think we're going to want to wait until that has a decision one way or the other, if sun suite's going to increase their discharge. But we'll have to do something with the pumps, and I think some of it will be based on what that generator can handle. Me personally, I would like to go with a little bit larger pump than what's in that station, and that's the reason for the questions about the generator.
Craig, can you get that information to Denton?
Yeah, you want that for a meeting for our authority meeting, Denton, next week?
Yes, yes. You don't have to race around and, and get it special, but.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, you know, and, and thinking about things to discuss, I think the size of that generator will be one of the deciding factors on what we actually do.
Sure, I'll get that for you for our, for our meeting next week.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going back to mute.
Okay, Denton. So Chris, is that it then, on our guest then?
I think so.
Okay, then we're going to move on to Andrew George with our legal report.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Always tough to follow Gaga ball, but I'll give it a shot. The, the first thing on the list, and the list is only of two things, is the UCC Appeals Board. So that's the countywide Uniform Construction Code Appeals Board. It's been around for twenty-plus years. We are a member of this board, and any municipality that has the UCC adopted has to have an appeals board. So in the late nineties, when municipalities, well, when the act came out, and municipalities adopted it, they formed this countywide board so that each municipality wouldn't have to have its own board, just because of the headaches with, with staffing and maintaining. So the membership fee, I think had been like a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a year. And what the county is saying is that we never increased the membership fee, but due to new cost structures and increased overhead, the need to raise the fee has finally come. So they're raising it to $300 per year. That being said, it's probably still cheaper than the, the headache. That being said, it's probably still cheaper than the, the headaches involved with having to have our own board. So that's the reason for this coming to, to council, uh, is because of the fee raise plus the countywide board has a new intermunicipal agreement that they would like all the participating municipalities to sign. They made some slight revisions to their structure. They, um, removed alternate members for some reason. Um, and they also revised the requirements to serve on the board basically to eliminate any conflicts of interest, the way I read it. So that, that's the issue. Um, there's, uh, they said in their correspondence that we would have to do this by ordinance, but I confirmed that it was okay to do it by resolution. So there's a resolution that you saw Chris, uh, pass around, uh, earlier or later today. That was the four o'clock email that came with the resolution. And then there's also a intermunicipal agreement with the county. Does anyone have any questions on that?
We, weren't we part of this before? Uh, or is, I mean, is this new?
I, no, it's, it's not new, Tammy. It's been around for 20-plus years and I think that Fleetwood probably has been a member since the inception.
I, well, that's what I thought. So it's just a matter of changing a few things.
Nah, they just, they made some minor changes to their basically operational procedures.
And the price went up slightly? Like, what, what did we pay before?
It was like a hundred or a hundred and fifty a year. Now it's three hundred.
Three hundred.
Basically doubled it. Yeah, but they've never raised it. They probably should have raised it incrementally, but they, they just never have.
Well, it seems like a no-brainer to me, but.
Agreed. I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second, please?
It's Pete. I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll?
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion carries. Andy, moving on to the approval of this Spreaker land annexation.
Yes, so thi- this is just a, a vote to ratify or final approval of the Spreaker annexation plan that was discussed at last month's meeting. Member Russell Anderson was, was here and he described the details of the plan and we, we conditionally approved it, uh, based on, uh, or subject to Berks County Planning Commission approval. Since last meeting, the county has, has approved the plan. So this is just a vote to ratify our, uh, final approval.
Can someone make that motion to ratify?
It's Ralph. Ralph, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second, please?
I'll have a second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll?
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that carries. Anything else to call for us, Andy?
Yep, I just had one, one more thing that I'll, I'll just mention and we're gonna have an executive session on this is, uh, related to the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency audit that was done. And there were a couple findings from that audit that we discussed in executive session, uh, related to a couple potential violations. Um, this relates to the audit of the, um, discharges at the sewer plant.
So then, Chris, can we go into an executive session now then, please?
We could. Uh, the other thought is you wanna wait till the end? That way whoever signs off can stay off and not come back in.
Sure, that's fine. Andy, then if you just hold tight, we're gonna move on to Park and Pool with Ralph, please.
Sounds good.
Ralph, you're on.
So we, thank you. We just have a pool update. We've now heard from the state that we're allowed to use full occupancy. So we've told Mary that she can open up the gates a little and offer more passes. We originally had limited to 50% capacity and we had actually sold out all the passes that would have worked for 50%. So now she's opened that window a little wider. Um, the stage we were at was Fleetwood Schools. So remember, the first stage was Fleetwood Borough Residence Only. Then the plan was Fleetwood Schools and then outside communities. So we went back and reopened it to the Fleetwood School Group and obviously the Fleetwood Borough as well. And passes are coming in. So we'll keep you advised and obviously we'll keep an eye on it, cause we still want it to be safe, although we're allowed to have people, there's still mask requirements and other requirements that Mary's handling. That's all good. Um, the second thing on the list was one of our guards found alternate employment. So we're gonna ask to re-approve the list. It has one guard name different than the first list. But the same idea, the guards are only paid when they actually work, so we're approving the list of potential guards. And Mary's gonna supervise as always and pass around the work among all of the potential people on the list. Chris, do we need to do that one by motion? I don't remember.
I think so, since it's a hire.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve the guard list that Mary submitted and recommended.
I'll have a second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll?
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed, yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion carries then. Now we're gonna move on. Chris, can you do the managers' report then?
Absolutely. Um, the codification update, um, is a significant overhaul of, or a significant project, uh, which will involve some overhauling of ordinances. I think I sent the, uh, proposed draft codification out to everybody on council with the request to let me know what areas you want to focus on. Uh, we would then take that to the committee and, uh, go from there. I had a very good meeting with Andy and Colin, Colin from Andy's office, um, who has reviewed this substantially and, uh, our codification people had, uh, quite a, quite a bit of notes on legal type things that they suggested and, uh, Andy's office reviewed those. So the next step now is to figure out what we want to update on an ordinance basis and then go out for a, uh, advertise for re-codification, including ordinance changes sometime this year. Um, so I think I put in that list the things that I know people had mentioned that they wanted to have revised or looked at. If there's anything else, let us know now, so we can tackle it all at once. Any questions on codification?
Chris, was that in the four o'clock email?
No, that was, uh, about a week ago or two weeks ago.
All right, thanks.
Um, if anybody needs them again, just let me know. It's, uh, two PDFs, maybe three. Part one, part two, and zoning. So it might have been three PDFs, um, of all the codification, uh, that, uh, was done. Uh, pension audit is very quick. Uh, I think I mentioned at last meeting, we had the audit. We just got all of the, uh, results back and are all, no findings. And they're available for, for public, uh, inspection here at the Borough Hall. So that mainly is a kudos to CAP, uh, who has kept our pension records, uh, spotless. And, uh, we're doing a pretty good job there. Um, and then higher additional to community center. Um, as everybody knows, we have primarily students as our ambassadors. And one of the, uh, the advantages of having students is we get a lot of energy. One of the disadvantages is they tend to go away and go to college. So, um, over the next couple of months, we're gonna be transitioning into new ones. But we do need to hire one now. Um, I interviewed Megan and I'm gonna botch the last name. It's the librarian's daughter. Anybody wanna give me a, uh, how?
Milosowski.
That's it. So it's, it's Megan Milosowski, um, who is interested in, uh, becoming ambassador. So if someone would like to make a motion to hire her, that would be phenomenal.
It's Pete. I'll make the motion.
Oh, looks like we've got a motion by Pete. Ralph, how about you have a second?
Perfect.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, please, calling the roll?
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that carries then. Thank you very much. Chris, do you have anything else on your report?
Uh, real quick, uh, I just got an email today that the DCED, uh, grant for the bridge and, uh, or for the benchel, uh, was submitted. And as you recall, we submitted the, uh, one last month for DCNR. So now we're in a waiting game. So both of them have been submitted and we hope for the best. That's it.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on then to Craig Conrad's Public Works Report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first off, on the water, um, projects we have began, project, um, it's actually labeled Project Seven, but it's the first project of the eight on the Pennvest, uh, project list on South Franklin Street. It is near completion. I'm gonna say within the next two weeks, the first project should be, should be completed and then we'll be moving to Pine Street, um, probably in about a month, the way it's looking. Um, on the wastewater side, we had, uh, the authority had purchased a new, uh, return sludge pump for the, uh, for the plant. We have, our crew has removed the old one. We got the new one downstairs in place. Um, I had Deathco come in and help with the installation, the, the final installation of the new pump. Um, we just had the electrician in yesterday and we're looking at startup in about two weeks. The company has to come in for startup and their avail- availability was low. Not, not within a week or two. So, so that's moving forward and, uh, we're moving ahead. Um, we also have been working on implementing a maintenance program. And that should be put in, into action by late June, early July. Um, we're working on that with Arrow Consulting. And again, the authority had stepped up and, and helped us out with getting that done. Uh, as far as streets go, paving scheduled to begin on June 14th. We're gonna do milling on 14th and 15th and come in behind with the paving machine. Um, I had sent Jimmy a list of, of where we're going and what's going on. Him and I have spoken about all that. And I just wanted to add one thing on that. As we're repaving streets, there's a lot of streets, old streets that had concrete like aprons, you know, in the beginning of the alleys and those kind of things. They're all deteriorated. And, uh, when we paved, we've been taking them out because the concrete and, and, uh, the asphalt does not mesh together and the asphalt tends to push off of those. So we've been removing them and just, uh, making asphalt ramps. But, uh, we had eight of them to do with the projects that we had scheduled for this year. So with our intermunicipal agreements with Richmond Township and Maiden Creek Township, um, they both came in. We did some street sweeping for them earlier in the year and they both came in and helped us with these ramps. And they actually knocked everything out. They got all of them done in a two-day period. So we had enough, enough manpower to have one crew tearing out while the other crew was putting in and it worked fantastic. So thank you for allowing us to work with our neighbors. It really paid off in that project. From Water, Ryan Kern gave you an update on West Arts. Um, I, we haven't seen that yet. Chris and I should be seeing those plans the way it sounds shortly. The pool replastering project is moving ahead. Um, we expect completion on May 17. The only other thing I have is a rain barrel event I got scheduled for June 26th down at the park under Pavilion One. We're allowed to have 12 folks join that, cause they can only transport 12 barrels at a time. So thanks to Mayor Gore, we already have four people signed up for that rain barrel event and it looks like it's gonna be a success.
Yeah, um, Craig, I thought you said it was the 29th. No?
I'm sorry, it is the 29th. Whatever was on my fire. My bad. I didn't have, I don't have that in front of me. The 29th, that's correct. So unless anyone has any other questions, for me, that's my report. Thank you.
Hey, Craig, I, I have a question regarding the, the repaving. Um, I, I know this is like a double-edged sword to ask. Um, but is it possible to, to have those, uh, streets posted somewhere on, on our website or something that gives people an idea that they're gonna be rippling up streets in their area?
Well, what I do, John, is I have letters all ready to go that I will hand out just to the affected residents. My guys will go out and hand them out door to door. That has a date on of when it's gonna get milled out, when the paving machine is coming in. So I, I have been doing that for the last several years. So instead of putting it on the website, I've just been doing it per project.
Okay.
If you put it differently, I can do it that way, but it's been working that way.
All right. Um, and if you would let, uh, the fire company know as well, just so we know for planning purposes.
Sure.
So, uh, let, let me, uh, chime in on that one, John. The, um, the, the, the schedule is, is, uh, tentative. And by posting it and then moving it, it, it becomes a little bit more problematic. So Craig's method of giving them an advanced notice prior, when we know it's happening, uh, can be a little bit more effective.
Yeah, what I was kinda thinking of is, hey, we, we plan on doing these streets between, y- you know, these months. Just so there's a, a guideline of, or a, an idea for people who li- might live in the area but not directly affected. Um, and not necessarily nailing it down to, we're doing this street this week, this street this week. But just a, here are the streets we're planning to do and we're gonna do them between June 1st and July 30th or something like that, would be my thought.
Well, we could do something like that. That wouldn't be a problem.
Just a thought. I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts on that.
A lot of them are alleys this year, aren't they?
Yeah, they are. Yes.
Oh, I, I don't know.
The main street, the, the big streets that we're doing would be Oak Street and then East Main, where the split is, the island up. Those are actually the main streets that we're doing. The rest are, a lot of alley work. Our alleys have been really in bad, bad shape. We've been spending a lot of money patching and those type of things. So we're trying to knock them out to cut down our cost on patching and repairing. Especially while we're doing these water projects. Cause once the water projects are done, then we're gonna get on those streets.
It's Pete. I have a question.
Go ahead, Pete.
Uh, when are you gonna, or when does the pool open?
Memorial Day weekend.
So it's open for the Memorial Day weekend and it closes during the, that week and then reopens full-time the following weekend? If I remember correctly.
All right, so that gives you a week after the, the plastering's done to get ready?
Correct.
And the, you know, nothing's been are the pumps ready to go and all that? So they're shut down for two years?
Oh, yeah, the filter pumps were all ready to go, yes. Um, they, they have inspection of the banco, which they put on the pool. They finished on Friday. They have to inspect that. Um, the company's coming out to do that this Wednesday. They plan on plastering Friday at the deep end and then we'll start filling that. And then Saturday, they'll finish the plastering work and, uh, by Monday afternoon, hopefully the pool will be filled. I'm talking, you know, next Monday. And we have the filter, the pump all ready to go. The splash pad has been set up, de-winterized. We're, we're in pretty, pretty good shape.
Oh, that's good.
The water probably won't be very warm, but other than that, we'll be in good shape.
Okay, anything else for Craig?
Craig, I have a, I have a question. This is Colin. Is there any, uh, plan on repairing the pool's fence on the southeast corner? Um, every time I run through the park and go up, uh, on that path towards the pool, uh, I see that damage to the top of the fence. I don't know if it was a tree branch, uh, coming down and breaking it, but it's, it's very obvious and I was wondering if there's any plans on repairing that.
I don't have any at the, at the current moment. I have, uh, some other fence work that needs to be done down at the treatment plant as well. I could have them take a look at that. I could have them take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
Craig, why don't you do that, get some estimates, let's see what we're talking about to get that up and.
Yeah, I have them coming out to the treatment plant soon anyway, so we'll look at that at the same time.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Colin, for bringing that up. Most appreciated. Anybody have anything else for Craig? Craig, do we sign up with you for the rain barrel event or is there someplace else we're supposed to be signing up?
You sign up with me and then there's a $75 fee for each person, each barrel, I should say. Like if you come as a couple and you only want one barrel, it's still only $75. And that gets paid the day of the event to Park County Conservation. So you sign up with me and, and the fee goes to them.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll talk to my better half and I'm thinking we're going to be attending, so we'll be in touch.
Let me know, I'm only allowed to take 12. So once we get to 12, we're going to have to close the sun.
We will let you know straight away.
All right, sounds good.
I'll bring the wine.
And now it even becomes a more inviting meeting. There you go. Okay, moving along.
Okay, Suzy, we're in.
There we go. So Craig, you can sign us up, please. So moving along, does anybody else have anything for Craig or is he good to go? I think that's it. Thank you, Craig, for everything that you do. Make our borough so shiny and clean. We really appreciate it. Moving on, John, do you want to do the bills?
Yeah, if I can make the motion to, Chris will do them in the order on the agenda here. Do the current month's bills, May, from May the 10th.
So we've got a motion to approve the May 10th bills. Do I have a second, please?
It's Ralph, I'll second it.
Oh, I think Muck will beat you there, Ralph, sorry. So Pete gets this one. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was that Pete or was that Mark?
I thought it was.
I tried. It's, it's okay, I won't take offense.
Okay, so then we've got a motion by Mr. Touch and then a, no, a motion by John and a second by Mark.
Yeah.
There we go. All right, any further discussion? All right, then we're going to go to the vote. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
No.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
That motion carries. John, on to the second one.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the bills that were paid on April 26th.
Can I have a second, please?
It's Ralph, I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, then we're going to move on to the vote, please. Then, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed, yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
No.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion carries as well.
Suzanne, if I can make a, a comment, I, I know I've been sending out the last couple dates for invoices for review, just so that everybody knows, and I think I sent an email today, it's, if you guys are looking for invoices, they're, they're always out on the Friday prior to the, either the, the scheduled meeting or the workshop is when Cap puts them out for review. So if you don't see an email from me, just assume that they're out. I don't want anybody thinking that they're, they're not out until the day of.
And John, to follow up on that, if any, by any chance, Cap would not be here to do that, we would send a note out saying they're not going to be ready, so.
Thank you both. Okay, Chris, I can't see further down on the agenda. Do you want, is there anything else below those?
The minutes.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion, please, to approve the April 2021 council meeting minutes?
It's Ralph, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second, please?
It's Pete. Go ahead.
So we've got Ralph and we've got Pete as a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed, yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
John Rothenberger.
Yes.
Susan, I don't know if you're talking, but you're not coming across.
Yeah, Suzanne, if you can hear us, you're muted for some reason.
All right, since Suzanne.
This is Ralph, Suzanne, Suzanne's system went down entirely.
Come back next, is that one thing?
There you go.
There we go. Sorry, Pete, you don't have to pick up. I think at this point, we're going to move into executive session, correct?
And if it's, if it's okay with council, so Doreen doesn't have to come back on, I can document at the, when we come back, just who makes the motions to adjourn and then temporary.
We can adjourn, there's no need to, we can have the executive session after the meeting ends.
Okay, even better.
There's no action that needs to be taken, so we can, we can adjourn the meeting and just adjourn it into executive session.
This is Denton before you adjourn and go into your executive session. If I understood correctly, you said the executive, executive session is a result of an EPA audit? Is that, is that federal or a state audit that?
It's a federal. It was a federal audit, so we're, we're talking an executive session because it relates to potential litigation.
I, I understand what you're saying. My request is when we have the authority meeting, are we going to get a full briefing on this or is it nothing that, that concerns the authority? Well, I guess it does if it's from the historic plan.
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let council speak to that, but yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's going to be more information after we have a conference call on Thursday. So there's.
That's this Thursday.
Walt's this Thursday.
Okay.
Right now, we don't, we don't have all the information to put out there, but we will.
All right. Our meeting is a week from tomorrow, so I would appreciate any kind of briefing as to what's going on there.
If I can speak for the committee.
You can sit in after we have this, have the discussion today and the meeting later Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. We at least get a summary of it next Tuesday.
I don't know that we're going to have a written summary available for you, Denton, but we'll be able to give you a call.
An update, an updated meeting is all I ask.
Well, I, I, if I may, I think it depends on how the meeting goes. If the meeting goes and there's a resolution, correct me, Andy, if I'm wrong, then we can most likely give a report. If the meeting goes into an extension, then we might have to withhold.
Right.
All right.
I, I mean, any, anything that would, would be discussed, if, if anything would be discussed at the meeting next week at the authority would have to be an executive session.
Understood. Understand, all right. Thank you for your time. I'm going back to mute and say goodnight, I guess, if you're going to adjourn.
Yep, that's what we're going to do. We're going to formally adjourn and then we're going to go forward with the executive session. Andy, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then I need a motion to adjourn, please.
It's, it's, it's Pete, can I say one thing quick?
Sure.
My wife, Lee's at Richmond Township meeting tonight, giving a summary of what happened at the library last year. And we were talking about it at dinner and she tells me things that just absolutely blow my mind. Now, keep in mind, this is the summary for what the library did in 2020. You know, the new, the new facility opened August 3rd. We went through all the COVID stuff. We went through all the moving. The library, what the terminology is, lent out or whatever, 66,000 books and whatever they lent out, 66,000 last year. I mean, it, 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 doesn't that blow your mind?
I think it just enforces the library is to our community. So I don't think we can ever give them enough credit or under, underscore their importance to this area. Not everybody may use the library that we know, you know, you know, my family's getting older, my kids are getting older and they might not necessarily go or use the library. We've got a lot of citizens here in Fleetwood and in our surrounding school district who really rely on that. So we should recognize their importance and of course, there's great success moving downstairs.
They'll, they'll be coming to a council meeting and giving you the same, the same spiel, but I, I just, I just hear, I heard that before and it just blows my mind. That's all I have.
Well, we'd welcome them to come, Pete. I'm looking forward to hearing their report and to see how it's going.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody wants to discuss before we go into executive session?
I do have, I do have one question, this is Colin.
Colin, go ahead.
Assuming Governor Wolf lists the most of the restrictions by Memorial Day, is it our plan to return to in-person meetings at Borough Hall? Or what, what is the plan? I'm not sure if, if the rules or the emergency order extends, or I don't know how long it extends to allow virtual meetings, but I, I don't know, just asking that question.
I don't know that we've talked about, Colin, and I, the only concern I guess people might have is if they have had, I guess, the vaccine or intend to impose social distancing within the, within the room as well as require masks, I think.
I have a specific opinion, I'm just wondering if we continue to do virtual meetings and I would have no problem with that, but do we have legal authority to continue virtual meetings when these emergency orders expire? I don't know the answer to that and I'm not asking anybody to answer, but that's really a question that we should look into before next month.
I can answer that question. So the answer, if, if the emergency declaration is not extended, and I think it expires at the end of May, so as a borough, no, we would not then have the authority to continue to meet virtually. Oddly enough, townships can do it because the second class township code allows it, but the borough code does not.
Okay, well then it looks as if the emergency order expires, then we will all be seeing each other very soon. And I'm, Andy, we wouldn't have any issue, would there be any concern if we asked the folks in attendance to wear masks and to observe social distancing?
No, that's, that's not a problem at all to, to require that.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to do that or do we, can we just go?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we need a motion. We can just, we can just do it. Now, the Wolf has, has in the past waited until the last minute to make those extensions. It might be extended. I kind of doubt it though this time that it would be, but it's been extended about four times.
Well, since our meeting isn't until, it's not at, on June, you know, the first date of June, we have a little bit of time, so I guess we could wait and see how that shapes up.
Yes.
Yeah, actually looking at the calendar, it's June 14th because of the way it falls, so.
We'll have a little time, but Colin, thank you for bringing that up. It's a good thought because if we're not allowed to extend it, then we have to make sure that we make the appropriate arrangements to, to move forward.
Most municipalities are, are back in person, they have been. I haven't heard of any issues.
Well, then I guess I have to make sure that I'm all dressed up and ready to go with the next meeting. All right. Colin, do you have anything?
This is Denton, I did have one more question. I know the Legion is planning on the Memorial Day Parade. Did the borough get the okay to use Main Street?
Chris, I thought I just saw an email about the Memorial Day Parade.
The Memorial Day Parade is going on. Steve did apply to PennDOT. Whether or not we got the formality back from PennDOT, I don't know, but I think it's, it's, it is just out of formality.
All right, well, I know they're making plans, so that Memorial Day question from Colin reminded me. Thank you again, this time for sure. Good night.
Good night, Denton, always great to have you. Okay, then, team, I need a motion to adjourn if we've completed discussion of any outstanding
It's Ralph, I'll make the motion.
Hang on a second.
Oh, and we've got a second. So if there's no, is there any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors then?
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Yes, agreed.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yeah.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
And John Rothenberger.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.